Welcome you to this first meeting in this cycle of the Management Development Committee. And especially the two returning members who might be a help us many of us through the next 12 months. We just to remind you of business which should not be new to any of you, that ideally you need to have your phones on silent. Silent or switched off if that is helpful. If those joining the the meeting to speak, please make sure your microphones are turned on so people can hear what you're saying for the recording, but also make sure your microphones are switched off when you're not speaking because you don't want your conversations elsewhere than on the meeting to be broadcast. Remind you that this has been live streamed, so we will bear that in mind. All speakers are ensure they speak up to the microphone and on the screens. We've got two members who are joining us online on screen and ensure that they can be heard. You've all had an opportunity to work through, I was going to say read, but I think the better way is work through the 200 nearly 200 pages. And we will work through them hopefully today. And I the officers request that you do not share the presentations on screen until the item commences. Thank you. We now go to item one, which which is apologies. So so far apologies from councillor Jim Carney, councillor Sarah Wilson, Tony Carson's. And we have two members online who can contribute to the discussion and debate, but they're neither in a position to move an amendment, second an amendment or to vote. You have to be here in present because of the judicial semi judicial role of this committee. And so I could welcome councillor Paul Onat, who is sadly recovering from Covid and we wish him well and a speedy recovery. And as we say, keep it to yourself. And could I also welcome Neil Stephens, who again is online. And again, when they wish to speak, if they please indicate, we'll do our best to make sure you're fully participant in the meeting under the conditions that we've just mentioned. I don't think there are any further ones. There are members here who are asking questions or asked to attend understanding orders as preferably permitted. I don't know if they've identified a question or an item that we speak on and the portfolio is here to listen to the proceedings. And we have apologies from the Director of Performance and Partnership, Kerry Denton. Any other apologies? Item two, declaration of interest. If you have an interest in any item on the agenda, would you please disclose it before the officer commences their report on that item? Item three, minutes of the meeting held on the 16th of April, which have previously been circulated online. And they're not in the packs at this stage, they will be in future meetings, we hope. Could I call on either councillor Alan Collett or councillor David Cox as the only two members who were on at that meeting or are still on the committee to confirm to the rest of us they are happy with those minutes? And would they be happy to propose and second them between them?
Have a few items, no, no, only joking. Yes, I propose the minutes are accepted.
We'll therefore sign the minutes at appropriate time. Item four, items requiring urgent attention. I have just one to bring for discussion or consideration. It has been suggested by a member of the committee that we consider scheduling future meetings and asking whether they, when we schedule future meetings, whether they could take place in the morning rather than the afternoon. And I'd be interested to have any members views on that, whether they consider that appropriate, whether they're happy with the existing time or would like to move morning to afternoon, afternoon to morning, switch them around, what their views are on the timing of the meeting. Mr Cox?
I would be in favour of a 10 o'clock start, frankly, that would give us time and hopefully we will be beyond, as long as there's a lunch break, a small allowance for lunch. That would be fine. I would be, I think that would be more preferable to members if you've got to make the journey to Exeter to do it in the morning. But I guess obviously your vice chairman might have different views coming from North Devon.
I don't really, I honestly don't mind. The only thing I say is it used to clash with Cabinet in the morning. Because it was on the same day, but we're here on a Wednesday and it's yeah, it's just the clashes above other things, that's anything.
The only thing I'd like to voice on from former members, clearly today's agenda is unusual in that we're not actually dealing with any applications as per se. We're dealing with officers' reports. When we have applications to consider, how long normally does the meeting take? How long does it take? So therefore, there's no rationale for either going for morning or afternoon because of the timing either is suitable. Could, would someone like to move something if they want to keep it as it is, make a suggestion?
Well, in that case, Chairman, I'll move that the committee moves to 10am start.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Could I ask Democratic Services whether any matters we should bear in mind before we vote on this?
I will take it away and look at whether we've got any possible clashes. But I think it's something we can take away and discuss and come back if we feel there are any issues with that. But obviously we want to try where we can to, you know, make it easier for members really, so. Happy, so happy to take away that and try where we can to to actually put that into, yeah, into the calendar.
Colin is happy that we don't take a vote on that, thank, thank. Come on to item five of the agenda, which is pages one to 184. On Devon Minerals Plan. The presenting officer is Rachel Tuckett. I will explain the process particularly to new, any new members and new members of local authority. The officer will talk through their, present their report. I will then ask members if they have any points of clarification on the report. As this report fits into sort of five or six subsections, I'll call each subsection at a time. So you'll have the opportunity, if you wish to ask several questions, to answer several questions, you don't have to do them all at the same time. After we've had that point of clarifications dealt with, I will then move from the chair, the officer's recommendation and hopefully look for a seconder, quite close to me, I hope, on that matter. And then we will go in to debate on the issue. At the end of the debate, after everyone has spoken, I will ask the officer who presented the report if there are any further points they wish to raise arising from your debate and discussion on that topic. And then I will move to the vote on the issue. Thank you. And over to Rachel.
Yes, good afternoon, members. This is a report based on the review of the Devon Minerals Plan. You were provided with a briefing note which briefly set out what local plans are, just in case you needed a reminder or you weren't familiar with those things. So local plan is a document created by local planning authority that sets out policies and proposals for future development of an area. It sets out a spatial strategy for how land is used and policies to manage where development takes place. And local plans form what we call the development plan for an area. As the county council is a two-tier authority, the development plan for Devon's administrative area is the local relevant, oh sorry, the relevant local neighbourhood plan, no, let me do that again. The relevant local plan, any neighbourhood plans, and then the Devon Waste and Minerals Plan. All of those things together form the development plan for an area. So just thought it'd be helpful to clarify that as we start. So in terms of the Devon Minerals Plan Review, as I said, the Devon Minerals Plan was adopted in 2017. It covers the period from 2011 to 2033. As I said, it forms part of the development plan, it sits alongside the district's local plans and provides the local minerals planning policy to inform the determination of mineral planning applications in the administrative area covered by Devon County Council. It includes a spatial strategy, site allocations and development management policies. As a county council, we have a statutory requirement which is set out in the National Planning Policy Framework to review any of our development plans every five years. This is the first review of the Devon Minerals Plan. The review is informed by Planning Practice Guidance and Planning Advisory Service Guidance as well. The purpose of a review is to assess whether the vision and objectives of the plan are in track to be achieved and whether the policies are proving to be effective and fit for purpose five years on from adoption. The review is a technical exercise, it's been undertaken by the planning team, but we've also had input from county council specialists, including landscape, flood risk management, ecology, highways and climate change. The review is sort of supported by five topic papers which provide the evidence informing the conclusions that we've made in the review. All of those topic papers were included as appendices to your report, hence making it so long. I'm going to present each topic paper sort of individually, just to highlight what's considered in those and what the conclusions of those are. As I said, the full details of everything in the topic papers are in your packs in front of you. Topic Paper One consists of a five-year review of annual monitoring report data. So our annual monitoring reports are reviews that we produce annually to monitor the implementation of the Devon Minerals Plan using the monitoring indicators that are set out in that plan. They're a really valuable source of information for the review because they help us to look at what, how the plan has been implemented over the last five years and to highlight any issues. So this, this topic paper looked at a two-stage process. It firstly looked through the previous five years annual monitoring reports to check whether those flagged any major issues or any issues at all. And then we reviewed those issues to determine the cause and whether the relevant policies needed to be reviewed or updated to address those issues. The issues raised in their reviews are set out in the topic paper, but the conclusion is that the issues are generally caused by either non-policy-based factors such as market forces, change in demand in minerals due to national and international economic changes and technological changes, and that those are not in our control. Therefore, a change in any policies would not address those issues. And the other issues were largely due to implementation of the policies. And the conclusion based on those is that the policies themselves don't need updating, but there are a series of recommendations that we've identified in the topic paper regarding implementation of those policies and how that can be improved to better, better, yeah, apply those policies to decision-making. Yeah, so the conclusion, the review of the issues concluded that the two main causes, both non-policy-based, so market forces and implementation of the policies. And the conclusion therefore of topic paper one is that this time we don't need to update the Devon Minerals Plan policies at the moment, but those recommendations in that topic paper are being implemented from now. Well, there's some of them are already in place. Topic Paper Two looks at a review of consistency with national policy. So we have a requirement to review the minerals plan in terms of its conformity with national policy, reflecting any changes in national policy since the adoption of the plan. The main things that have changed nationally is we've had several updates of the National Planning Policy Framework. However, it's considered that the key principles of national policy remain unchanged. Most of those changes have related to the way in which local planning authorities plan for housing, development, and they're not necessarily relevant to the minerals plan. It was therefore concluded from topic paper two that the minerals plan remains in conformity with national planning policy and therefore no review is required at this time. It's worth noting at this point that we are aware that there are future changes to local planning process coming up, which will affect any update to the minerals plan in the future. However, at the moment, we don't have any definitive timescales for those changes or the content of those changes. So it's the opinion of officers that review percentage shouldn't be delayed whilst waiting for those changes to come in. In the framework within which we're working at the moment, the plan is considered to be consistent with national policy. Moving on to topic paper three, which looks at the progress and delivery of policy requirements. This paper reviews whether the plan is effective in ensuring the adequate supply of minerals and whether there are any issues impacting the delivery and supply of those minerals. And therefore, does the plan need to be updated to address any of those issues? The paper considers each type of mineral to determine whether there are any policy barriers to delivery taking into, taking into account the land banks that we're required to provide by the National Planning Policy Framework. That is, how many years of supply of those minerals do we have consented in the county? Any closures or cessation of operations anywhere and any new quarry, quarry permissions over the last five years. Similarly to topic paper one, issues identified in progress and delivery of policy requirements, they tend to be again around market demand for minerals and business decisions and are therefore not in the control of policy. That being said, that any update to policy wouldn't impact those market demands or business decisions. And therefore, similar to topic paper one, the issues are not able to be controlled by policy. It's concluded that the policies remain fit for purpose at this time and no update required in terms of progress and delivery of the requirements. Moving on to topic paper four, this looks at changing circumstances both nationally and locally. Looking at any changes in policies that may affect the vision, objectives or policy in the plan. This, this topic paper considers six kind of main areas of change that we perceive in local and national policy. And that is the climate emergency, consideration of critical minerals, BNG, sorry, biodiversity net gain, also known as BNG, and design codes, drivers for growth and marine plans. In terms of the climate emergency, tackling climate change features strongly in the plan and it's quite central to the vision. We consider that the policies in the plan are sufficient at the moment to to contribute towards tackling the climate emergency. In terms of critical minerals, there are some prospective areas in Devon, but work hasn't progressed on any of those. The spatial strategy and the objectives are supportive of bringing forward critical minerals. It is acknowledged that the plan will eventually need to address these, given the growing importance of critical minerals, but at the moment it's not required at this stage. In terms of biodiversity net gain, the policy doesn't, policies don't specifically address biodiversity net gain in the plan, but are supportive of proposals which result in a net gain. There is a statutory 10% biodiversity net gain requirement for all planning applications that are within that, within those requirements. The plan doesn't stop that happening and we don't consider there's a need to repeat that 10% in local policy when it's a national statutory requirement. In terms of design codes, the introduction of design codes in local plans could result in an increased demand for building stone. However, the policies are considered to be effective in supporting building stone extraction in the minerals plan. And it's considered that those be sufficient to address any increase in demand. Similarly, in terms of driver, drivers for growth, there's a lot of national drivers for growth in terms of building more houses more quickly. Again, obviously this could result in an increased demand for minerals to facilitate building. As far as the minerals plan is concerned, at the moment we have the sufficient land banks that we're required to have through policy and the provisions of the existing policies are sufficient to respond to any increase. So we don't consider there to be a need to update the plan based on national drivers for growth. And finally, we have two marine plans which cover Devon. These are plans which cover from the kind of high tide line out to the extent of the UK's ownership, I believe. We have two of those plans which cover Devon. There has been a, an exercise undertaken to check that the mineral plan policies are compatible with those marine plan policies and it's concluded that they are and that no review is required based on those. So in conclusion, looking at changing circumstances in both national and local policy, it's considered that the policies resilient, resilient to the known and potential changes and at this point no update is required. And finally, topic paper five looks at duty to cooperate. Paragraph 68 of the National Planning Policy Guidance requires all local planning authorities to cooperate with statutory consultees when we're reviewing our plan. So the statutory consultees, including all district and neighbourhood authorities as well as bodies such as the Environment Agency, the Marine Management Organisation and Historic England, were provided with those first four topic papers and a summary document. And we're asked if they had any comments on any of those. No duty to cooperate issues were raised, so as far as other authorities were concerned, we had engaged properly with them. We had a couple of notable comments. Firstly, from the Marine Management Organisation, which I've just referred to. They asked that we took into account marine plans covering Devon, which we did in topic paper four. And then with Teambridge requested a review of some elements of the plan to enable them to exercise their planning duties. They have an issue with mineral safeguarding areas, in particular, possibly in conflict with some of their housing needs. We've concluded with Teambridge that a review of the plan isn't required at this point, but we've put some actions in place to address their concerns. Again, full details of those are in the topic paper, but we are working with Teambridge prior to any future review of the plan to address some of their concerns. So therefore, in terms of topic paper five, it's also concluded that no update is required to the plan. That was a bit of a whistle-stop tour of all of the topic papers, I understand. There is a lot of information to read. So hopefully that's given you a bit of a summary. The recommendation of the report is that the conclusions from the review, including all of that information in those topic papers are endorsed. And that, yes, any of the recommendations that are set out in there as well are also endorsed. Thank you.
Thank you for that tour of five very dense topic papers. Could I ask if the slides could go back to the sheet showing topic one? So that members can see what the topic is. So that starts on page 41, if you've got your packs in front of you. So does any member have a question in relation to topic paper one, the five-year review of annual monitoring report data?
Yeah, thanks for the, the report. My main concern was it was really disappointing to see that indicator 6.9 was only met once in the past five years. So that's the target of 50% of applications, including provision for renewable energy, the use or generation or low carbon energy. It was good to see that research is being undertaken on, on the options and promoting these through pre-application discussions because it seemed like both the applicants and potentially officers weren't really clear what the possibilities were and what we could be potentially insisting on. So I mean, that's fine, but my concern is there's sort of a get out clause in there in that they must include a provision for renewable energy or give reasons why not. So I mean, there's the potential that applicants can just say, that's not economically viable or whatever, we're just not going to do it. So my question, questions are, so how was, how was that 50% target determined actually? Because I mean, that sounds low to begin with to me, was that benchmarked against other authorities? And secondly, how will we ensure applicants don't get out of doing it for, yeah, how strict can we be on, on making sure they do? Thanks.
Is the officer able to respond?
So the 50% target came at the time when the minerals plan was adopted. There's a set of indicators at the back of the plan and they, they set targets basically, so that was where the 50% came from. So for then each annual monitoring report, we review which, what applications have been determined. And we kind of, we make that judgment as to whether the application, whether it could have included renewable energy or low carbon options. So if it was just an extension of time of how long it's working, you know, it's not something really that could be considered. But if they were extending an area of working or they were changing operations or there was an element that could be re-looked at, then we would say, okay, we consider that application relevant for that indicator. And then we would go into that application and see have they, did they do it or did they not? So that's how we kind of work out that target. And then in terms of the, oh, how do we make sure it happens? So yeah, you correctly pointed the two recommendations we made, we've made. So at the moment, our minerals application form and validation list is really quite old. And so that's where that recommendation comes from. Obviously, we, there are national requirements, validation requirements that people have to follow. There are local, and so this would be a local list. So it's, it is one of those planning balance matters, I'm afraid. So we would always encourage it with pre-application advice. And if it's included in our validation checklist, then that gives us more weight to say we would, we want this to be considered. And then the, the research we're doing is hopefully going to sit alongside that. And we're actually trying to produce a guidance note as well. And we've going to the industry for like best, best practice examples. What have you been doing? Where are the good examples around the country that we can hopefully then point people to? So yeah, I mean, but it, in the same with all planning decisions, it would be that balance of the need and the, the impacts of it and climate change would kind of be one of those considerations.
Good, Chair, could I? Yes, that's right. Could we have a, a report back on the outcomes of that research? And, and maybe sort of a view on whether that 50% target is reasonable, does it need to be lower, could it be higher? Could we have a report back on the results?
Yeah, we can provide a, once we've done that guidance note, maybe we could bring it to committee for consideration and or even share that beforehand with, with you for feedback. I'm happy to do that. And the, the target, the 50% is set within the plan. So that would require an update of the plan to review that target. So that's probably not movable at this stage, but if we can, we can always aim higher, but that's just if it triggers the review of the plan, if that makes sense, that target. Do I make sense?
Councillor Abbott.
Yes, thank you. I'm afraid I have not got my questions divided up over the five papers. Some of them are strategic and I am new to this and this is, I think it's understanding context is, is, is a lot of my problems with this.
Could I suggest we go through the five papers as I've suggested? Then we'll come back to you for, should anybody, I know anybody else who's got generic questions to also relate to the officer's report and the conclusions and recommendations, would that be helpful to you?
If you say so, Chair.
I say so, thank you. Councillor Ketchin.
And following on from councillor Ead's points about renewable energy and, and the 50% target. Can I ask that any information that comes back is benchmarked against other authorities, so we get a sense of how we're performing locally? And also, I think if I got the officer's point right, that we're performing at about 5% in the benchmark or the aspiration was 50%. Can we get a split between, if I've got this understand right, the, the sort of the rollover projects, as you put it, the ones that need more time? And so they're older, more legacy projects versus newer projects that are coming forward. I'd be particularly interested to see that split because that's about the change in behaviour between older practice and a more modern way of providing consent. So if we could see that split as well, is that okay? So the benchmarking and the legacy versus new, new project split, please.
Also like to respond.
Oh, yeah, that, I think that would be fine. We'd be able to set out what the applications were and yeah, we can do that.
A follow-up, Councillor Ketchin, you're happy with that response? If the people online have a question on any topic paper, could they please raise hands or just let us know so that we can, we can bring you into the discussion? So we'll move on from topic paper two to topic paper three, which is progress and delivery of policy requirements. Any questions on councillor Abbott?
I can identify this one. So on page eight, which is just into paragraph 2.2.4. At the top of the table.
This is page 122 for members in your packs.
We're talking about Petric Stove Basin. And the response is that all areas remain operational, but this doesn't really give any detail. What about the amount of reserves and the rate of extraction? What will happen to achieve a replacement supply? What is the interplay of the county council setting a plan and industry exploring for further resources?
Yes, please, please, please respond.
So the Petrostock Basin is up in North Devon and it's ball clay, it's ball clay, the resource. So it's an industrial mineral. There's no requirement by national policy to have a supply of, well, you have to have a supply, but it's not set as a land bank as it is with aggregates. So it's a little, it's considered a little bit different. We we monitor the sites annually. We, during those discussions, operators will often make us aware if future plan or if, you know, resources are are low and they're thinking about looking for extending sites. Ball clay is, it's, you know, it's quite an important mineral. So and it's worked slightly differently to to a crushed rock or sand and gravel quarries. And that it's very slow extraction because it's mixed with different types of clay to create different products. So, yeah, I think there's, there's no, there's no officers have no concerns about ball clay or the, you know, the Bobby Basin, Petroso Basin kind of supply because we're aware of, you know, operators will come forward as and when.
Okay, thank you. On three pages later, paragraph number two point three point five. Michael, do you want to give a? You're happy. It reads despite the policy support, the twelfth L A A highlighted highlighted that Devon had a sand and gravel landbank of six, five point nine years at the end of twenty twenty two. It goes on, it became seven point five years and that this is very close to the minimum of seven years. So again, although it's applying to this, I draw it from this paper. My question is, how is the plan? Does it drive minerals extraction? Does it? Does it just act as an archive to the? What's going on? Is it encouraging companies to go out and and do more?
So in terms of sand and gravel, we have preferred areas in the plan. So there are two preferred areas. And that was obviously that came from the call for sites with operators, as you would with housing back when the plan was adopted. So the two preferred areas for sand and gravel. And one of those areas was granted planning permission on appeal. And unfortunately, the operators decided not to continue. And they won't be, I doubt that permission will be implemented. But at the time of developing the minerals plan, another site was, so the second site was included as the preferred area. So that's west of Penslaid Cross. That has a current application being determined, which will likely come before committee this year or into next year. So yeah, that it it's kind of the, it's depending on the type of mineral, depends on how the policy responds. So sand and gravel, we have the site allocations, but for every other type of mineral, it's more of like a criteria based approach. And minerals can only be worked where they're found. So it's kind of.
So exactly that. So do we act as an encourager to industry to go out and find more? Because we're only at the minimum supply. Do are we halting them because our policies are restrictive?
I don't believe we're halting them because our policies are restrictive. We, there are other sites can come forward under these policies. We, it it's up to the operators to bring those sites to us. And if they don't bring them to us, other than allocating sites, you know, during the plan adoption, I'm not sure what more we can do.
So our plan is just reactive, just an archive. And we have no way of fulfilling the seven years' demand. If government puts that on us, we're nothing to do with making sure that we meet government aims.
Well, we have to monitor the like the land banks every year. So we send surveys out to operators every year to know how much they've sold, what reserves they've got left. But I suppose. Yeah.
We only have one debate at a time.
I think I, yeah, just add to Emily's point that actually I think some of the points we made further on in some of the other topic papers around kind of market forces and things have a huge influence on what comes forward. It's different to a district local plan in terms of they are, their purpose is to encourage as much house building as they can. The purpose of the minerals plan is to facilitate mineral extraction when it's needed and when it's required to in order to facilitate that development. So there's a lot of kind of business decisions based around the extraction of minerals that are out of our control. And so, yeah, that brings up to that point of it may be that we are in a situation where we can't reach the seven and a half year landbank because that, yeah, because business decisions have meant that they're not bringing forward those sites. That makes sense.
Catching next and then councillor Ead. I'll send councillor Ead.
Yeah, I hope it's not the case that, I mean, it seems like the only way we could encourage more extraction would be to reduce our standards, right? That's if if we need more people to apply. Although, yeah, I hope that's not the case because we're not refusing lots of applications, are we? So it is, I mean, hopefully the the target maybe will be reduced if it's not achievable. That's not something we have any control over, I don't think. One specific question I had on this actually was it said, so it was at the end of twenty twenty three, we had seven and a half year reserves. Obviously, we're in twenty twenty five now, so have we actually potentially dipped under that already?
So the way that we calculate those years, there's always a delay. So at the beginning of this year, we've now sent out the forms for last year. So there's, there's, it's just, there is a delay in how we calculate those those figures. And it's the same across the country.
But would you anticipate that we have now dipped below it, considering where we were two years ago?
We're probably quite close, but we've got west of Penslay Cross coming forward with an application with an operator willing to extract. So, you know, it's going to probably be dependent on that occasion.
Any further points on? Plan paper three. We'll move on to paper four then, which is changing circumstances on page one, three, seven. Slide is in front of you. Questions on paper four? Yeah, I'll move on then to paper five. Is the duty to cooperate engagement? Any questions on paper five? Could I then move back to councillor Abbott, who had some questions, strategic questions, which might cover the officer's report and the first appendices, which was all the conclusions from the work? So over to you, councillor Abbott.
Thank you. Certainly a large report. What sort of team do you have to be able to cope with this? Do you, is it valuation staff? Is it geology or engineering geology or?
So it's the us in the planning team that deals with it. Myself and Rachel have done the bulk of this work and we're planners and that's our background and we picked up minerals for the whole time we've been here. So that's our experience. We sit on national and regional groups for minerals. So we are constantly sharing knowledge and understanding with each other.
So with such a big document, reading it is one thing, assimilation of it is very different. And really, conceptually, I'd like to talk about this more to be able to understand whether I'm voting for the right thing. But this is a, this is submitted as a five year review, but it's two years overdue already. So I wonder if a few more months would make any difference anyway. It's, I wonder why it wasn't done within five years. And now that there's new councillors not used to this process, how are we going to cope exactly with this knowledge? We're needing knowledge.
Well, the the simple answer is resources. We haven't had resources in the team. We've been stretched to other work. And I appreciate, you know, it's a lot of information for a set of new councillors. But we've tried to, Rachel and in the report, have tried to give as much background as possible. We've sent the briefing note about the local plan. And, you know, we're happy to do training on specifically on minerals and waste and any other topics. Yeah, but we feel like all the information kind of need is there.
Okay. I suppose that's a matter of perception. Everything seems to be going well. Every page ends with everything's all right. This is since a report that's been going since two thousand and eleven. Did you point out one or two challenges? Well, I've got two challenges, which I've mentioned one. Oh, I've mentioned them both now. So maybe you have other ideas of challenges, even though everything is working perfectly well according to the report.
I would just suggest we're just seeking clarification on the content of the report. That might well form a part of your points you wish to make in the debate, which the officers were applied to at that stage, councillor Abbott.
I'll leave the rest of these for the debate then.
Overall document, nothing from those online. Could I now move to the stage where I will move the recommendation so we can debate the recommendation? The recommendation is to endorse the, A, to endorse the conclusions from the review of the Devon Minerals Plan twenty eleven to thirty, twenty thirty three, that the minerals plans policies remain fit for purpose and do not need to be updated at this time. And B, endorse the recommendations set out in the mineral plan review. Is there a second there?
Chairman, I'm very happy to second.
Thank you. Open for anyone who wishes to make comments and discussion on this issue. Councillor Ead.
The only point that I would potentially like to see changed was in relation to biodiversity net gain. So I appreciate the report sort of sets out how it's compatible with the new legislation and it's part of legislation. So applicants should know they have to do it. But I think we could be being more proactive on this. The report notes that emerging district plans are mentioning the requirement for biodiversity net gains. So I think we're missing an opportunity to to highlight how seriously we take this in Devon, rather than it just becoming a sort of a tick box X. So I'd like to propose that biodiversity net gain does get added into the report and that its importance to Devon gets emphasised. And I suppose that's a amendment. Can I do that?
Before we move to a formal amendment, could I take the officer's response? And then you might decide you wish to push it in amendment or you might be happy with the officer's response.
Yeah, if you want, I felt like they addressed it in the report already, but if they want to.
And yeah, I suppose the only thing to add to what's in the report is that we are waiting for national guidance on how B N G applies to minerals development. It's a really tricky area to to quantify because of the kind of long periods that minerals operations work over, but also the huge areas that they take up. So there is, there have been some meetings between DEFRA and some national groups around mineral planning and how B N G relates to those. So I think at the moment we'd feel it's perhaps premature to put anything into our policy before we receive that guidance. And that's kind of our stance.
Hello, Cat. Thank you ever so much for your email regarding the bush. Just got to find out who owns the bush. I know that he has been maintaining the bush over.
You're going to have to move, thank you. So, yeah, but also one of the recommendations in the, in one of the topic papers does include putting B N G onto our validation list. And also, it doesn't at the moment, but we can, we will be including our requirements of B N G, not just the nationally required documents, but we do have a list of locally required ones that we will be putting onto our validation list so that any applications that come forward will be taken into account B N G. Those are published online at the moment as a guidance, but they will be being put into our validation list. So we will be able to require applications to include those in the very near future.
I'll leave the position on your amendment for just to hear these three speakers. And I'll come back to you in response to what the officer has said, whether you wish to add an addendum effectively to an additional section to the recommendation in regard to the point you raised. But firstly, councillor Connet, then councillor Cox, and then councillor Ketchin.
Thank you, Chairman. So my thoughts are this, to what good purpose are we being asked to support these recommendations? The mineral plan itself is quite a tomb, isn't it? And if if probably my preference would have been for the committee to have had a really good briefing on the mineral plan and then for the report to have come, because I think it's context and it's about the understanding of the minerals plan, how it came about, where we are with it and those things. But we are where we are. But the recommendation A specifically says that we agree the policies remain fit for purpose and do not need to be updated at this time. Clearly councillor E thinks that it ought to be updated at this time. And officers have sort of indicated, oh, we're waiting for national policy and this, that and the other. It might suggest a timidity to mess with anything. What I'm not sure of is if we agree with recommendation A and B, how long are we agreeing it for? Is it for a year, two years, three years or another five years? Which actually we'll take this up to twenty thirty and the plan only has a life span of one until twenty thirty three. So it strikes me that in a way, the way the recommendations are phrased, they've opened up a Pandora's box in the sense that you want the endorsement, but I suspect you really don't want people to open up the issue of policy. The recommendation does. And therefore, I think councillor E makes a point, he says, look, in one aspect here, the plan doesn't speak to where we are now or what others are doing. And local councils are doing their local plans, which may, because of timing, be more advanced than our thinking was when this was here. So I think there probably ought to be some thinking from officers about whether you simply want an endorsement, as in it's good enough, there's a body of work going on somewhere else, there'd be a new plan along in eight years' time. How does that help the people of Devon if we don't keep it reasonably fresh? So those are the questions in my mind. Thank you, Chairman.
Ask councillor Cox to follow, then we'll go to the officer for clarification.
I was just thinking, we don't really need an amendment. What we need is the officers perhaps to bring back what they're, when they've got some solid, know what's happening, to bring some, bring something back to this committee for us to look at.
The point I was going to raise following on from councillor Dan and from councillor Connet now, is this set in stone literally for X number of years? Or is it a fluid document where elements of it can change and be amended as it go along? So if there was an undertaking, as councillor E requires for an update of a particular aspect of policy or any member to bring an aspect of policy, that could be looked at and it doesn't have to wait five years. It could be done at that time and the document amended at that time. Or is it a fixed statutory document that has to stay in as whole and you cannot effectively alter any section of it? So I'd be grateful for a comment on that. So grateful for the officers to respond.
Right, so tell me if I don't remember anything. So the purpose to support the recommendations, obviously, this is the development plan, the local plan, the mineral plan in applications will be determined in accordance with. So we want to make sure it's considered up to date. So if we didn't continue with the review, there is the potential for that argument to take place if an application is refused. And I suppose it's the same with housing. They would may argue that our policies are out of date because we haven't carried out a review. So that's kind of the purpose. How long are we agreeing this for? Well, as we've said, a review has to take place every five years. We're well, we're aware that there are plan making reforms coming at some point. The government keep saying it's not that far away. So as there is going to be a new plan making system and we will have to produce a new plan at the time reforms are introduced. So we will be producing a new plan at some point once those reforms come in. But we don't know what they said, what they are, what they're going to say, what we'll need to produce yet. So there's that aspect. Like we said, we carry out the annual monitoring report of the the plan every year. So if we feel that actually so, and this kind of touches on your point about the struggles. so, and this kind of touches on your point about the struggles. We have highlighted in the reports some, a series of recommendations where we can, we feel we can better implement the policies. So the guidance notes, the mineral, the validation checklist, the application form that's just out of date. We feel we can update those. So that, you know, we're reviewing every year the plan and identifying ways we can try and improve things with the current framework we're in. And if we feel during one of those reviews that actually the land bank's fallen, we need to start looking for sites. We need to, we need to trigger an update at this point. We can do that at any point in time. I think the purpose of this is to say, well, you know, for now, we feel we've got a robust decision making document in place and we would like to continue with that, continue monitoring, put in our recommendations that we've come up with in, in the topic papers and, you know, and continue to review the plan if there seems to be, you know, if issues continue.
So to clarify, as I understand, and hope I'll come on to Councillor Ketchin, that there is an annual monitoring report of the strategy and the implementation of the plan. That is reported to this committee?
No, we produced that under delegated.
Just that I would assume that that might have been one way for Councillor Ead to keep an eye on the particular situation he is concerned about or any member is concerned about and ask for further work at that time. So that's an internal document delegated to officers. Right.
Could we ask for it? Could we ask for it to be brought to the committee?
I don't see why not. Yeah.
Are you proposing that, Councillor Cox?
I should propose that. Most times I don't think we've had any comments, but there we are. It's there.
And is there a second of a proposal that the annual monitoring report comes to this committee? Vice Chair is seconded?
Yeah, I'm very happy if I can just speak very happy to you because I think we just need to way forward here. We may be clear of the officers that we've put the council at risk by not having this updated. It's a review. At any point, the review has to happen. We all have these situations in our households indeed, whatever our lives, where this is where we've got to make this decision now on the information available. Much reassured by the fact that we can come back to look at BNG. We can take into account the local plans that are coming from the housing authorities and the district planning authorities and take that into account to change it in the future. Much reassured.
Councillor Ketchin.
Strikes me that mineral plans are the area of the experts and that they've got a whole lot of new members here that probably feel they're not experts on mineral extraction. No surprise. There are some things that are a little bit more intuitive and those are probably the elements that get more scrutiny because people feel intuitively got more of a handle on that. Probably includes BNG. I've got a concern that the current position is as we're asking developers to have a ten percent BNG requirement and that legislation is in place. Okay. But the, the plan suggests we're not, that there is not much precedent for this as stands nationally that the council are unsure how this could therefore be implemented. And therefore we are not making a statement on how we're going to move that forward. That was the essence of the debate that I just took away just now. That I'm not happy with. That I think is not a position of strength. It's a position of deferral and I do think we need to move this plan forward on whole because I think I've been in a council that doesn't have a local plan and it does not serve the council well. So we shouldn't be in a position where we kick this can down the line. We should vote this plan through. It's a robust piece of work. And I say that because I'm not an expert in minerals and I don't feel that I should try and unpick work that has been done by people that are in the field that are expert planners on minerals, but for something intuitive like BNG that we are kicking down the road, I'm not happy on that at all. And I do think we need to just pause and say, how are we going to move that element forward? Otherwise, people who come forward with plans that this committee will see in the next months and years ahead will not have their feet held to the fire on the BNG element, for instance. So I think we just need to be a little bit mindful of that and come up with something today that changes the emphasis and says, we may not exactly understand how BNG is implemented for mineral plans, but it's more robust than what we've got worded here, which is we're really not sure and so we're not moving anything forward. And I apologize if I've got that wrong. That is my understanding of where we are and where this plan leaves us on BNG.
Thank you. Could I point out, Councillor Ketchin, we both sit on an authority with, like me, an elderly local plan. It's still there, but it's very elderly. Now, Councillor.
Thank you. I'll just carry on with everything that I, the other things that I have, although I will precede it. Didn't somebody mention about renewables or wind farms and there's only fifty percent and that was set in two thousand and seventeen? And since then, has this, has this authority declared a climate emergency? In which case I would have thought the policy would have changed since two thousand and seventeen. And something greater than if that was the policy before of fifty percent. I don't, and I'm sorry, I haven't got the wording or the of renewable energy that it should have gone up by then. Anyway, I'll keep going. I wonder what the supply, how the supply of minerals within our county supplies our counties' needs. And, and following on from that, because Cornwall needs all the Devon roads to be supplied, how do the, how do those mineral supply for Devon and Cornwall? Are they met by our two counties or are we trucking through lots of other people's minerals through our counties? When something is mentioned like building stone as a resource, then I would imagine there's all sorts of building stones and that they come in all sorts of levels. So that building stone in the ground is not the same as it being mined, nor it being dressed. So that the quality of and the quantity of actual stone available depends upon what stone is required out of the range available and how much it's been processed. And you'll be glad to know this is my last. We are, we are told that there are just two landing places for Marine One Minerals. And I wonder what the M M O, Marine Management Organisation's position is on, on expansion and how that influences what D S, our, our, as a county say and vice versa. Because are we interested indeed from our high watermark to the international boundary with Wales or the international boundary with France? Is that within our control or is it in the MMO's control? Are we, will we go for more than sand and gravel? Are there places for preparation? And, and, and the care for construction and environmental issues associated with Marine One Minerals? Thank you.
Would you like to respond to those points?
Yeah, again, if I forget anything, please tell me. Touching on BNG, I'd just like to point out, so policy M seventeen of the plan, there is a point that says mineral development proposals will be permitted where they result in a net gain for wildlife proportionate to the nature and scale of the proposal. So we have a net gain in policy. We don't specify ten percent, but that's what the legislation specifies. How that's implemented? Mineral development at this point in time does have to provide a ten percent net gain. The, I think the debates probably come in the detail of that, but they do have to provide it. That needs to be agreed with the county ecologist. So that's all done at the application stage. Renewables. Now, I think there's a bit of confusion about the target. So we've got a policy in the plan, policy M twenty. It talks about the mineral development must minimise energy demand, make provision for renewable and low carbon energy to meet onsite needs. It talks about minimising atmospheric release of greenhouse gases. It says utilise landscape designs to offset carbon emissions. So we've got everything in there. We're providing that guidance note to try and find ways of how to implement that. The target comes from the monitoring side of things. So that target's in the annual monitoring report. And that's the, a target for a trigger for the review of the plan. So we're saying, yes, we've hit that target, but we think there are ways we can then implement, make the implementation more effective, which are the recommendations set out in the report. The supply, so yes, and yes, we've had the climate emergency. That's all covered in topic paper four. The supply of minerals for Devon and Cornwall. So we sit on a national, sorry, a regional body called the South West Aggregates Working Party. We meet quarterly, I think, and that's all the authorities in the South West, the minerals industry and government as well. So and they produce a annual report that draws together all of our authorities' reports to look at the regional picture of the supply of aggregates. So that's produced annually by the South West Aggregates Working Party. Obviously, there's some minerals in Cornwall that aren't in Devon and it depends on the geology. So for sand and gravel, yes, we, they don't have sand, land one sand and gravel. They have secondary aggregates from the China clay workings. So that they, you know, we work together that from that and we also work with Somerset on that. We're in quite frequent contact with other authorities about the supply. Building stone, there is a table in the minerals plan of all the building stones that are, have previously been quarried within Devon and that are currently worked within Devon. So we do identify those. So if, if operators or people come forward, we've got those key building stones. We're aware of those. We know that they will have some historic, you know, value or value in the building stone. And yes, there are different ways of working. So to make sure the stones are good quality. Landing places for marine aggregates. We have very little marine aggregates coming into Devon, although we have those two two landing areas. I don't know if the MMO said anything about the expansion of them, but we have policies in our plan that safeguards those, the, the infrastructure, so those landing areas from non-mineral development. So if a sensitive use came forward within that area, we would respond as a mineral planning authority to that application on safeguarding grounds to make, to, to get to a point where we felt that application was acceptable. Is that everything?
It is. Well done. Thank you.
Could I try to bring this together and I'll come back, Councillor Ead, in a moment. We have on the table a recommendation, section A and B. Councillor Cox moved to recommendation in effect that becomes section C, that the annual monitoring report comes to this committee for consideration. Correct? And that was duly seconded. So can we first of all have a vote on whether you're happy to accept the amended, the amendment being added to A and B? I'll then come back to Councillor Ead to see if that satisfies his requirement or he wishes to make a further amendment or addition. So all those in favour of a C being added to the recommendation regarding the reporting of the annual monetary report to this committee, those in favour, please show. Those against? Abstentions? That is carried. So the annual monetary report will come to this committee. Now I come to Councillor Ead in relation to the issue you mentioned specifically on biodiversity net gain. Does that additional amendment satisfy you or do you wish to take the matter further?
I still wish to take it further. I hope what the officers said, it's, work's being done, it's partly covered. But I think there's an opportunity now to put that emphasis into the report. But I would still like to add specifically mentioning the A and G and highlighting its importance to us in Devon. I'd like to pose that as an amendment.
Actually, have some wording please, so we actually know what you're formally proposing as an addition to the recommendation.
So the ten percent requirement for biodiversity net gain to be specifically mentioned and its importance to Devon emphasised.
Where, where do you want it mentioned?
In the appropriate place in the report, don't mind that.
What we could potentially do is for B, endorse the recommendations. So obviously we don't have a recommendation on BNG at the moment. We could potentially add a recommendation to update the, make sure the update in the validation checklist and the, and the application form, we specifically to say temporarily, we specify ten percent net gain and we can update our guidance on that.
So it still won't be in the plan? It'll just be in the?
No, at this point, we're not proposing to amend the policies of the plan.
You are suggesting as all the accompanying paperwork in relation to this duty will state ten percent?
Yeah.
Councillor Connet.
I don't think we can have the cake and the sixpence, can we? You can't amend the paperwork to be ten percent if it's not the policy. Because anyone will come back and say, but that's not the policy. That's.
It's, it's national statutory requirement. So it has to be done. It, it will happen regardless of what the policy says. So I don't see the need for it to be.
Come on. So in that case, can I have it in sort of plain, plain English? I've got the vice chair saying one thing and I'm hearing, trying to hear what you're saying. So my comment was, how can you update something if we don't change a policy and you say you can? So you just run me through how Councillor Ead achieves what he's asking without moving an amendment?
So there's a series of recommendations in this paper to improve the implementation of policies. I would suggest we add something to that series of recommendations covered under B, which specifically refers to BNG.
Is Councillor Ead happy with that? Note from the officers that they'll take this matter on board and there's no need to pass a specific amendment to the recommendation to achieve this, this work will be undertaken?
Yeah, as long as we can re-review it, see how it goes after the work's done and we've maybe got a better idea. Look into it further. Yeah, maybe when the next AMR comes out.
Councillor Ketchin.
Just to clarify then, so we've all got this straight in simple terms. If an application comes forward for mineral extraction, the conditions will clearly lay out at the start or at the planning stage what the BNG specifically is required for that application. It won't be something around the lines of ten percent of BNG improvement required. It will specifically say in the application, this is what's required. You're going to have to do this work, that work or that work. Is that what we're talking about? Otherwise, to me, it has no teeth and then we do have to revisit this.
So the way biodiversity net gain works, it's a slightly confusing way. Any application that is subject to biodiversity net gains, so that's any new application that was submitted since February twenty twenty four. All of, any permission that's made has a assumed condition on it that all, all of those applications have to meet, which is that ten percent biodiversity net gain will be achieved. And they have to submit documentation to the, to the determining authority. So if that's minerals development, that'll be to us. Our ecologists will check that through what they're proposing, they will achieve ten percent net gain and that they will monitor that for thirty years. The way that BNG works is we're not allowed to determine an application based on whether they can achieve that BNG. That is something that is proved after they have the consent, but they aren't allowed to commence their development until they have shown that they are able to achieve that ten percent and how they're going to do that. So regardless of anything that we write in the reports today, anything that is amended, that ten percent is an automatic condition on any, every eligible planning application. So any new mineral applications that come in will have to achieve that ten percent. Does that answer the question? I couldn't remember. There was another bit.
Could I now propose that we move to the vote on the amended recommendation? Which relates to A and B as printed and C. uh, which relates to A and B as printed and C in relation to which we've just agreed, the annual monitoring review, a report coming to this committee for debate and discussion? All those in favour? Those against? Abstentions? Thank. Interesting debates on minerals. Uh, let's move on to item six now, which is on S106 agreements. Um, for new members of this committee and for new members of local authorities, we did, uh, send around a briefing paper on S106, in case you think it's some sort of secret code that's only some people know about, uh, that you're aware of what planet, uh, developers' obligations are. Uh, so I'll ask the officer again to take us through, um, the recommendation in regard to this issue. So Sarah Rontage will now take you through the report, starting at pa- uh, page 185.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, just a quick musical chairs. Um, so before I get on to the detail of the report, um, I thought it would be helpful just to do a quick summary about section 106 agreements in addition um, to the briefing note that was shared. Um, for anybody that is a bit less familiar with section 106. So section 106 agreements are legally binding agreements that are often entered into with planning applications um, to mitigate the impact of the development and seek to make the development acceptable. So most commonly, those are involve financial contributions, um, but they can also involve things such as land. So where we have a section 106 agreement, they must, the contributions in that must meet the three tests set out on this slide, and they must meet all of those tests. Those tests are set out are that it must be necessary to make development acceptable in planning terms, must directly relate to the development, and it must be fairly and reasonably related in scale and kind to development. And that is set out, um, in legislation. Um, so in terms of Devon County Council, we typically, uh, receive and request contributions in certain areas. So those are some of the areas that are listed there, they're the key ones. So education, that might be a contribution towards a new school or an expansion of an existing school or potentially towards school transport. Highways and transport, so that could be something such as a new or improved road, a sustainable transport, so public transport, um, cycle pedestrian improvements. Waste management, so that would typically be something like a household waste recycling centre or community infrastructure, so things such as, um, children's, uh, children's services, that sort of thing. So it's moving on to the paper itself. We don't currently request monitoring contributions where we receive, um, where we enter into section 106 agreements. Um, but there's still regulations and planning practice guidance do allow us to do that. Um, so it is set out again in legislation. I mentioned the three tests earlier. They're slightly different tests for when we're seeking monitoring contributions. Um, and that is that where we request a monitoring contribution, it must be fairly and reasonably related in scale and kindness to development. And that it shouldn't exceed our estimate of the amount that it will cost us to monitor, um, those, those agreements. At the moment, we'd have to check, um, things such as when development started, making sure we're getting the money, spending the money. So as a, a brief list, there was a type of things monitoring needs to include. Um, so developing maintained databases, liaising with stakeholders. So for example, um, district councils in terms of number of homes that have been delivered at development, whether a trigger point has been met. Uh, it might be liaising with developers as well on similar points. You need to invoice the contribution and then we need to monitor the receipt and make sure that we're spending that on the right things and ultimately, um, reporting on that. So at the moment, we try to do that as best we can within our current resources, but we don't seek additional contributions towards it. We are, as part of this, proposing to seek contributions and just to set out there what we are seeking to achieve. So the proposal as in the report is to set a fee at £500 per trigger point. The terminology of trigger point, so that's the point at which a payment is due or something's due to happen within the section 106 agreement. We have looked at what other local authorities are charging in this table and report those authorities that we've looked at. And that 500 per, per trigger point broadly fits in the lines with, uh, other local authorities. We've also had a look to see, okay, well, if we set it at that level, does that match what we expect the cost of monitoring to be? And then finally, this is new in terms of what we're proposing. And one of the requirements is that we shouldn't charge more than it's going to cost us. Um, equally, we need to make sure that what it is costing us, we are seeking to cover through, um, contributions. So we have, we are intending to undertake future reviews to make sure that that fee remains at a suitable level. Finally, just moving on to recommendation, there's two parts to this one again, A and a B. Um, A is to approve the recommend, the proposal, um, to introduce monitoring contributions, set that at a figure of £500 per trigger and allow the indexation of that annually to make sure that it reflects, um, uh, it, it increases as, um, prices and costs generally just increase. And then, uh, B is to delegate authority to undertake a review of the level of monitoring fees and to increase those fees, um, where the income is less than the cost of the monitoring.
Thank you. Are there any questions, clarification? Councillor Connolly.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to check, I may have misunderstood or maybe not seen it. Uh, I'm perfectly fine with a monitoring charge. I just need to be clear, is it an extra charge? So in my simple language, if we had a section 106 agreement for, say, 10,000 pounds, do we invoice 10,500 pounds? Or do we invoice 10,000 pounds but deduct the 500 from the section 106? I wasn't sure if it was an additional charge. Uh, then secondly, um, having, if the committee decided to implement this, does the council have a process to actually invoice the developers for it? As in thinking about the audit trail. Will officers actually charge? Will there be a system in place that people know that they're doing this work and then think, and we will invoice for this? And then the next bit of it was in relation to B. Ordinarily in this council, of course, when we review fees and charges, they're done in consultation with. I'm not sure who the relevant cabinet member is, but certainly, you know, the, the chair of the committee, I would have thought. Um, only because, um, it adds some member oversight to the council's charging. I think that's an important consideration we ought not to lose sight of in the council. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll work through each of those in turn. So the first one was whether it's an additional charge, yes. Um, it's, monitoring fees are more regularly charged by, um, district councils at the moment. We're not seeking to, uh, reduce our other requests that might be made to allow for a, a monitoring fee. Um, it would be in addition. Mechanism for invoicing developers? Yes, and I think that's also linked to, to this proposal in, in a way as well. Um, we already invoice developers in terms of other contributions. Um, so that would be, um, you know, same provisions for, for this. Um, and the intention of this is that we improve our system of monitoring section 106 agreements. So, you know, uh, as set out in the report, the intention is that the monitoring contribution would be payable on commencement. We would be monitored as, we'd have the intention to have the resources to make sure that we can do that. Um, it would be set out in the section 106 agreement that there is this charge, this fee. Um, and, and, and that is a legal agreement, so that obligation is there with a mechanism to invoice. Um, the, the, uh, recommendation, um, obviously as proposed, it is, um, uh, for office, officer to, um, review. The intention that was, it was, uh, I suppose a fairly technical review. And, um, the recommendation is to increase fees, um, reflecting the costs. Um, I'm, I, I, I'm happy if, if that, if members, um, consider that is in consultation as potentially uh, the chair of this, this committee, then, then, um, you know, that, that's a decision that, that members can take.
I just want to come back. Obviously, uh, if you think about highways, for example, fees and charges proposals are published every year. There's a cabinet member letter, members can read it, they can then call it in, challenge it or, or just make simple inquiry, why are you doing this, that or the other? Um, and, and here again, I, I, you know, I don't think that's going to be any, anything that I would disagree with in terms of an annual increase in charge, but it's about member oversight. So for me, it's about the process by which, uh, members, uh, could see what is proposed. And if it's done with the committee chair, of course, that could be done in a dark room somewhere, mightn't it? You know, in the, in the dark recesses of County Hall. It's for me, it's about how members get to see it and know it. And then it adds to their, their body of knowledge. So, um, in B, I would like to see the amendment that it's, um, you know, done, done by the, over the decision of the county planning manager in consultation with. And I think it has to be, uh, the chair of the committee and the relevant cabinet member, so it's published as a cabinet member decision. Thank you.
But later as a formal, um, amendment, um, or addition to the, of that one. Uh, I've got two members. Could I just ask one question myself? There is no start date for this, so when will these changes, changes come into force? Because presumably, we are not able to retrospectively impose this charge on all the S106 agreements that are currently in force. So I would have thought at some stage, we might, you might need to consider within the recommendation when the formal start date is for these charges to come in.
I suppose there's no start date because I didn't know what the committee was going to do. Um, but you, you're right, we, we can't retrospectively a- apply it. Um, but the intention would be, um, following decision of, of the committee to make sure that future section 106 agreements, um, that include provision for monitoring fees going forwards.
Councillor Ketchin.
And there's a implicit indication in this recommendation that costs will only go up. Um, and we haven't actually done this work yet to have a baseline for where the costs will lie within the county. I would like to propose a change to the second part of the motion when it comes about to reflect the possibility that costs may actually be lower. Uh, and we shouldn't just be using this as a, an exercise to sort of rake in a little bit extra money on the side. Not that that's the intention, but you follow my logic that if the costs are lower to monitor this, that should also be reflected in the actual cost of monitoring. So I'd want paragraph B to be modified to be rather than increase monitoring fees to change monitoring, mon- monitoring fees to reflect the actual cost of monitoring, but we can come to that in a minute.
I'd take note of that, and as new councillor Connolly has already suggested, another amendment to it. So we'll take them in turn after, when we get to the, the debating, uh, point on it. Any further questions? Yes, vice chair.
Thank you. Um, in section three, the proposal, you say that they need to improve the monitoring of section 106 funding was raised as part of internal assurance review. Um, but there's only two members on here that have been here before, so we've no idea what that actually said and whether there's anything else that needs to come forward. That would be helpful. It's aside from this, but it'd be helpful for us to know what that said.
I'm, in all honesty, I'm going to tell you everything off the top of my head. But.
You want us to send it to us?
Uh, yeah, ha- happy, happy to share sort of key points from that. Um, i- in, in terms of where this has come from, this was a, a, a clear recommendation, looking at making sure that we've got appropriate resources, um, the potential to, uh, appoint, uh, a monitoring officer. So there's somebody, it's clearly their role, um, rather than trying to fit it in with your day-to-day roles, which is a bit of a challenge.
Thank you. Uh, I have no problem with this in principle, although I'll come to something in, just at the end of what I say. This, um, says per trigger point, and I suppose i- in a large quarry, there might be, um, multiple trigger points. I don't know what the trigger point is in this context. Um, yeah. Um, and of course, it's not all minerals, it could be an electricity substation or something. And, and so there, there will be small projects and there'll be large projects. Um, and secondly, although we're not concerned with housing here, when at district councils, we have county offices coming because they're talking about the roads. And so might there be, uh, a trigger point associated with housing? And then, so to bring my point full circle then, although it's easy for me to, to vote yes to a £500. Actually, the, this will then become a charge on the residents when they buy their houses because there'll be a charge within the overall cost of the house being recovered from residents. So.
Um, so it's probably a bit of a point of, of clarity on the, on the first point. So, um, most of the section 106s that we enter into as county council are in relation to housing developments. So as our statutory function, so seeking contributions on, um, education, um, transport, those sorts of things. That's not to say that there aren't section 106 agreements for, um, the developments that, that we deal with at Devon. Um, but they are, I think it's fair to say rare in terms of the, um, financial contributions that we, we get from those. Um, so yes, it, it, it will, it will cover those and the amount that a developer will pay will likely vary according to the scale of the development. There'll be, um, the, the trigger points, the terminology, that's the point at which somebody pays a contribution. Where you have a, a large, um, hundreds of, of homes, there'll be far more points at which contributions are, are paid. Um, so it applies to, um, any application where Devon County Council is a signatory of a section 106 agreement. It doesn't have to be, um, the determining authority for the planning application. Um, it, it, at the moment, um, I, I, I think the key thing is that we can mitigate the impacts of, of the development. Um, there are proposed to be, there, there are contributions that, that are received from, uh, developments coming forward for us to deliver infrastructure a- a- and the like. We need to make sure that we're delivering that infrastructure, um, uh, to align with the development coming forwards. And the proposal to introduce some monitoring fees will allow us to be, um, better at monitoring that, making sure that we're getting the money and spending the money. Um, uh, in, in terms of your point about that being passed on to, to residents, I don't think that's something I can, I can really comment on. Um, it, it, we, there are costs of developments coming forwards rightly. Um, we need to make sure that the impact of that development is mitigated.
Further points of clarification before?
I'll have an amendment to B, Chair, which I think picks up mine and councillor Ketchin's point. That's helpful.
First of all, move the recommendation as it is. We then move to your amendment, uh, which I think most people hopefully will accept. I also think in relation to the point that councillor Ketchin made, that a readjustment of the wording in B would also accomplish that, the objective he wants. Because at the moment, there's an implication, uh, that is, we're not getting sufficient funds in from it. His point is, we should want to set the situation where we're not getting excessive funds in, in from that. It is a, it is a fair charge. And I think a wording adjustment there, councillor Ketchin, uh, would look at the paragraph B might solve that particular issue that he raised. Move into the debate on the issue. So can I call councillor Connolly to speak first of all, because I, hopefully he will then move his amendment?
Thank you, Chairman. So I'm comfortable with the proposal, um, in, in, in the principle. I'd like to move an amendment to B, um, and if I just read it out for simplicity, delegate authority to the county planning. And if I just read it out for simplicity, delegate authority to the County Planning Manager in consultation with the Chair of the Development Management Committee and the relevant Cabinet Member to undertake periodic reviews of monitoring fees following implementation. And, which picks up Counselor Ketchin's point, to adjust the fee to reflect the actual cost of information. To adjust the fee to reflect the actual cost of monitoring as necessary, which means it can go down as well as up.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone wish to speak on the amended resolution? A stays as it is, B with the two points of adjustment. Anyone wish to speak on that? No? Oh, therefore move to the vote. Or we have, we have had Counselor, oh, sorry, all right, we'll come back. Now the substantive, if it becomes a substantive motion, yeah, all right. Well, that, as that has been accepted, we'll now move to this as a substantive motion as amended, right? To include those two changes introduced by Counselor Connet. So all those in favour of the substantive amended motion? Those against? And abstained? Right. The amended substantive motion is passed. Thank you. We now move on to item seven on the agenda, which is the County Council's education approach for developers' contributions. So a similar topic, but this time from the education team in regard to their system. So I now call upon Anna Helcox to present the paper which starts.
Good afternoon.
Page 191.
Good afternoon. So the item we have today is, is essentially to approve our updated Section 106 policy. I'll just give you a background. This is quite a longstanding policy that we have been using, which essentially supports our statutory duties to provide sufficient education places across Devon. And the principles of the policy that we're putting forward have not actually significantly changed that much. Our approach within the policy is essentially guided by national policy. And this update is required to align with the latest Department for Education guidance issued in 2023 regarding securing developer contributions, as well as the new school place, score, scorecards published in 2025. Adoption of the new policy will enable Devon to increase the rates at which we request education contributions and therefore result in increased funding for school infrastructure. And that includes a range of infrastructure from early years, primary, secondary, special needs, post 16 and school transport. There's quite a large remit there. And this will ensure that our school, school communities remain sustainable and that additional school places can be planned and funded. The policy also ensures that developers play their part by supporting the education needs of new and growing communities. Without securing these contributions, the cost of expanding education provision would be unaffordable and result in Devon trying to secure additional capital funding for the infrastructure, of which is, there is, is very limited. The Department for Education expects developers to fully mitigate their impact and it does not provide funding to mitigate housing growth. The policy is well understood by our developers and our partners at the districts alike and has stood up and been supported at planning appeals and throughout the planning process. So to conclude, we are recommending that you approve the revised policy to ensure that Devon's education contribution requests and the methodology that sits behind it are compliant to the latest Department for Education guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Counselor Ketchin.
The size of a school footprint is determined by how many pupils will be in it, which seems fair enough. But it makes the assumption that all schools should be on a single level. The reason I say that is it's implicit on page 214. It's implicit when it says 43 square metres per pupil is, is what's required. Well, that's probably a national standard, I would assume, yeah. And lots of schools nationally are on multiple levels. And there are other novel designs now around play areas as well that, that don't necessarily mandate they're all at ground level. For instance, there's lots of examples of that. What we've got in the formula is that with, you know, let's make the maths easy. If it was a 100 place primary school, you'd have a 4,300 metre square, a 0.43 hectare school. Because it's all on a single level. Now, that's all right if you've got lots of land and you're not trying to develop in the middle of a city. But this is holding up development in Exeter. There are brownfield sites in Exeter that we're trying to develop. I'm sure it probably applies to Barnstable, I'd imagine as well. But this policy where you've got constrained sites, you know, the 43 square metres, 43 metres squared per pupil is an important standard. But that can be done by delivering schools on multiple stories. And so I, I don't approve of this standard because it also says what the footprint of the, the land usage should be.
Could I ask you? Are you eventually going to arrive at a question mark?
Well, my question is, is can you, can you, yeah, thank you. I don't know, am I? Well, we're about to find out. Can, can you explain to me why there's this, why there's an implicit, an implicit thing in Devon or a standard in Devon that primary schools need to be on a single level? Or can we change the wording or, or get the, get a different understanding? Because the document pushes us down that route. Do you understand the question? Because I really don't know if I understood it.
I think so. We, we, we don't in Devon have a policy that stipulates one story, two story, et cetera. What we do try and follow when we're bringing forward new schools, most of the times with our partners in Department for Education, I have to say, is that we follow national government guidance under Building Bulletin 103. So this is guidance that outlines minimum and maximum space standards for new schools to ensure that the new accommodation is adequate for the number of pupils required. So the range of that would go, say, from a two, for a two form entry primary school, 1.6 hectares up to two, to two hectares, because that appreciates the schools, you know, the land that comes forward, school, school sites will have different constraints. There'll be different, different issues, access, et cetera. So it, it provides a range. The policy update does not specifically change that section in terms of the site size. So that is within our existing policy and there's no change proposed to that. To answer your question, but the, the key thing for us is adhering to the Building Bulletin 103 space standards.
Am I allowed to come back on that? I guess I'm not, not happy on that, you know, I mean, the explanation is there. But as this policy is laid out, it describes rather than, it's, it's saying there's two metrics, rather than just saying one metric, which is the space required per pupil in whatever design is brought forward. It's saying, here's the set footprint of land. It might be within the parameters, you say, of there's a 10% leeway one way or the other, which isn't stated in our policy here that I could see. It's just very much about, it's very much about a, a minimum hectareage. But I'll just come back to the point, this, this is holding up development because it doesn't facilitate buildings that might be multi-storey or, or novel ways of providing parking, the other things that take up land. And so I think the standard of 43 per square metres per, per, per child would be a better standard in isolation, rather than having a minimum hectareage of land. And so is it within the, the, the ability today, because we're looking at this policy, and to challenge that, ask that to be taken away and reviewed? So we can have the concept in Devon of an urban school, rather than assuming that we've got, you know, all, all schools, as this policy dictates, all schools would essentially, whether the multi-storey or not, still have this minimum require of land. It is holding up development at Water Lane, which is a major development in Exeter.
The word, the wording is, is, is taken, is informed by Building Bulletin 104. I should say Building Bulletin 104 refers to special schools. So we've used the space standards in the building bulletins to inform those statements.
Apologies. I'm just referencing page one, 214, which references standard schools, not, not special schools.
Yes. Yeah, that is, that is informed by Building Bulletins guidance.
I can't.
So I was just trying to clarify before you, Counselor, whether we have the ability to alter the wording there or whether it's a statutory wording that we've got to work within?
Well, the reason I brought this forward is I've had a discussion with a local planning director, you know, about the concept of urban schools. And there are schools within the UK that don't fit the standard, but are felt to fit the space requirement standards per pupil through novel solutions like parking under buildings or whatever, whatever it is, multi-storey park. So the footprint of the school can fit within an overall development. And that is the holdup here. It might be a technical point, but it's, it's, it, this report is driving us signing that off. So it's a real problem for me.
The question from Counselor Ketchin is he would like to amend the wording here. Is it possible, is that legally possible for us to amend that wording? Or, or is it a legal requirement? We have to stick with it.
No, no, Building Bulletins is, is, is non-statutory guidance. So, yeah. I believe so. Yes. I need to check with my manager, but yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm, I'm content to support the recommendation. I was interested in what Counselor Ketchin had said because obviously the new all through school at Matford Brook is more than a single story built by the government. That's not a reflection on this government or the last government built by government and is unable to be used because ever since it was built, it's either been subsiding or there have been other faults. And government won't say when that building will be available. It seemed an opportune moment just to say that not all schools are built by the County Council, are they? Which is generally when we build them, they're to a better standard than the government appears to have managed in the Captain Pogwash arrangement it's got at Matford Brook, where there is, of course, just for clarity, an excellent school alternative made up of portable buildings, which I think the Tadbank Trust use admirably and provide a very good service. But nonetheless, we would all like to know when the proper school will be opened. I digress, Chairman. Thank you very much. My apologies.
Yes, Counselor Fife.
I had a meeting with the Education Department the other day and I asked a question. I said, I said, how many schools do we have? Because I see it slightly differently, being very, very rural. We have a lot of small schools. Some schools are absolutely fantastic. People will drive miles to take the children there. Other schools are failing, even though they have the catchment area and they've got the children there. I sometimes wonder whether we spend too much money on schools and not enough money on education. I don't necessarily believe that the school itself. It's not the be all and end all of everything, because if we haven't got the teachers and we haven't got the pupils for the school, we're not providing a decent enough service. And that's what worries me when we take this kind of attitude that we should just keep building schools, because it doesn't work in the countryside. It may work in the cities and the towns, but it certainly doesn't work there. Thank you very much.
So Counselor Ketchin, when we move to look at the recommendation, in effect, you're suggesting that in fact the, the site size might, should only relate to the per pupil space and not equate it to a flat land size in effect, because they both say they equate. But there's, if it's based on per pupil, you can be more imaginative on your land use. So I've got notice of that. And when we come to the debates, questions on the report of clarification, right? We'll now move to the recommendation. Get back to the right. Might report the right page. The, the committee are asked to approve the revised Devon County Council Education Approach for Developer Contributions Policy Appendix One, written in accordance with the Department of Education DFE Non-Statutory Guidance on Securing Developer Contributions for Education and in line with the National Planning Policy Framework, the NPPF, and the Community Infrastructure Levy Regulations. That is the recommendation. Well, I shall move for the Chair.
Chairman, I'm very happy to say.
Now, I would like the advice of the officers in regard to the proposal or suggestion that Counselor Ketchin is more than likely to put forward in a moment when I ask him how that fits within this recommendation and whether it should be seen as separately or something the officers would take away with Rob and are dealing with as an amendment. So like their advice, please.
Thank you, Chairman. And that's exactly what I was going to suggest, actually. I think that we need to be really sure that any amendment to that is lawful and that we are able to do that. So my suggestion would be if members are minded to make the amendment in terms of the area of land provision, that actually members may wish to consider deferring the matter to the next meeting to allow the officer to go back. And we can investigate this properly and bring the report back to the next meeting.
If we do defer that particular item to be carried forward to that, does that prevent us passing this, this recommendation at this stage? Or is it the whole recommendation you're suggesting being deferred?
I would suggest the whole recommendation would need to be deferred.
Counselor Ketchin, do you wish to pursue the point you raised?
Well, on the basis of the point of clarification and that the officers feel the need to go away and just sort of see the implications of what I've suggested, I would recommend that this report is brought back to the next meeting with that investigated.
Until consideration has been given of the points you've raised in regard to school size provision and for a report to be brought back to the next meeting? Sorry.
I think that's, we're, you know, taking a sledgehammer to crack a nut. Could we, could we word it that we accept the recommendation subject to legal advice? I appreciate that's putting in the office's hands, but.
I will, I will take legal advice on what legal advice we need.
Can we have a moment just to think about the wording to make sure we get this right?
Come first, sir.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
I will. I don't know how much that costs for all those legal officers to confer for that length of time, but I now will call for a response.
Thank you, chairman. You may have gathered it's not straightforward amending the recommendation as it is. And my advice is that we would defer the item and bring it back to the next meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Connet.
Now it seems to jump to a presumption that we want to defer it. So there's either an amendment which is passed or defeated or there's a proposal to defer. I personally don't support either of those. I'm content with the recommendation. I did listen to what was said. I don't particularly want urban-looking schools in rural areas. I think this policy sets out what the council's done. In my own eyes, the council has done well over many years. If I went to Blantyre's Lane and looked at Windstream, which is a PFI school, it takes fantastic use of the downward slope. I used to go what was there before Bradley Row. It was a school that was built on the level. It was a playing field that was on the slope. They've changed that around. When you go into that school, you can't sit there but think what a fantastic school it is and the use of the space and the design. So, chairman, I don't agree with either a deferral or the amendment, but I, I, I think those have to be put down.
Way around this procedurally is to move the amendment, take a vote on the amendment. If the amendment is then passed, we have to have a situation where there could be a further amendment to defer the amended motion. If the amendment is lost, there will then be our vote on the motion as standing, which is that the document goes forward. Thank you. Councillor Ketchin, can you move your amendment and see if there's a secondary? Because unless we've got a secondary, we're not going to get very far anyway. Sorry.
Well, the person says I normally sort of say what my amendment is. But thank you in advance for your eager support. Fantastic. And so going back to page 214, so I've just switched my computer off. I thought we'd sort of gone through the debate. To remove the quoted hectareage in the document, which appears at several points, and stick to the per pupil criteria. I can't, I can't put that in. It's, it's, it's in the, it's in the meat of the document. I can't put that in a, as a neat little line.
I wasn't going to, but considering councillor Connet didn't seem in favour, I thought I would. I don't think it's about enforcing urban schools on rural areas. It's about not forcing, about not, not permitting multi-story schools where they are appropriate. So we just don't want to provide, include restrictions where they're not needed. That doesn't mean we have to force a certain type of school on anybody, is what my interpretation.
If no one else wishes to speak, I will move to the vote on this matter. All those in favour of the amendment, please show. All those against the amendment, please show. The amendment is lost. And from the chair, can I therefore move the recommendation as stated on your order paper? That the above approved the revised DCC Approach for Developer Contributions, Appendix One, written in accordance with the Department of Education DFE non-statutory guidance on securing developer contributions for education and in line with the National Planning Policy Framework, the NPPF, and the Community Infrastructure Levy Regulations. Is there a secondary?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favour? One, two, three. All those against? That is carried. We now move on to item eight A and B, which are for information, not for debate, for information. They're tabled for you, which is on two separate, one of our smaller reports, each on one side sheet of paper. If a member has any specific question about any of those, would you please indicate your wish? And that's on eight A. Any questions on eight A? No? Any questions on agenda item eight B? No?